So it is seven oh three. Can anybody hear me? I don't have it.
Right into.
Right into it. Now can you hear me? Like that? Yes, no? Back there, can you guys hear me? It's green as go. Green is on. Okay. Okay. Yes, it does light up there on the top. You are correct. All right, with that, let's call this meeting to order. Roll call vote. Everyone is here except for Marina and she is excused for this meeting tonight. We have some student representatives as well, Brooks and Josie, and we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And it's right behind. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Since we're doing this, and this is the first, I'm going to ask the two of you that are behind the cameras to come out and introduce yourselves real quick. Get in front of the cameras so you can be seen by all of those that are watching or might be looking and introduce yourself and how you were roped into this. I don't know that it's that, but anyway, if you could go ahead and introduce yourselves, please. Wonderful. Well, thank you. Thank you for your willingness to, uh, to work with us. Thank you. And thank you for organizing this for us. We really appreciate it. It allows for transparency in every way that we want and we're very, very grateful that you're willing to do this, so thank you. So with that, the mission statement is the Verroqua area school district provides a quality education for all students that inspires continuous learning, positive relationships, curiosity and compassion in an environment that welcomes diversity while developing respectful and responsible citizens. Spotlight on education tonight. We have Tracy. There you are. So come on up and I know that you have some other folks with you as well. If you could introduce whoever is going to be speaking this evening.
We have Daniel. Down the hallway to the morning motor lab that we have for the middle school students. Um, and, but I have a short video to play first, so you guys can have a seat and then we'll, we'll lead the group down.
Uh, before this video gets started, we're extremely lucky to have Tracy Golds here to be our full-time.
Jay, on the microphone, please.
To be our full-time OT for the Verroqua area schools. She does a great job and did a great job getting the motor lab set up in the mornings for our students and she runs between both and supervises both and then she has equipped some pair of professionals with.
And they targeted certain skills and so we modeled our motor lab after theirs. Right now, we have two motor labs, one in the elementary school and one in the middle school and right now we're just, because of space and people and my license, we only have special education kids coming through right now. However, movement is important for every child's education and learning, so I've tried to kind of broaden that with some of the things that we'll see here on our video. Are you ready? Sure. So this is our. We are limited on space, so we use as much of it as we can. This is our motor pathway this year in the elementary school. This is Mrs. Geary's class going through the motor pathway. Um, and I sent, I got a volunteer to go through it for me the beginning of the year and I sent it out to all the teachers. They showed it to their classes and so whenever they're transitioning in between classes, on a rainy day, um, when they have extra time, they'll go through all these little activities. Michelle Drucker, our PT, is an instructor for ballistics and this is the program. We start with bean bags and then progress to balls and it's great for vision, visual motor skills, crossing midline skills, coordination. Here's a quick little one for kindergartners. Every time they finish with their carpet time and go to their desks, they jump on down the strip. That's, this is in Mrs. Clement's room, Amanda Clement's room. And here is our middle school path. I sped it up, so he doesn't really, although he is pretty, pretty good, he doesn't do it that fast. Uh, but he volunteered for me today to go through this and they came up with this. They're like, oh yeah, talk about using space. We just go right under the desk, clean the floor. Um, all of these activities we've targeted, balance, core strength, motor planning. So right here is a big motor planning for moving from crab to snake. Um, what did I say? Integrating reflexes that kids haven't integrated yet, bilateral coordination, vision skills for scanning and divergence and convergence skills. So we try to do a little bit of everything so that the kids come through and they get a good, um, a good mix of all those skills and extra practice for those. The more dynamically they can use their body, the more they're engaging their brain and then that's enhancing learning and reading and everything, executive functioning, problem solving. So, are we ready? Would everybody like to go down and visit the middle school motor lab? Okay. Field trip.
I've got my keys.
Are you going with this timer? Okay. Okay.
You've gotta be in it. You gotta speak.
It seriously has to be in your mouth.
So you went through that.
Yeah. Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm. So they don't hear anybody talking. They can hear everyone.
And they will still never hear.
Tyler, I'm sorry.
I'll record on my phone and this added later.
Okay. Um, so I left them know that if they're not speaking, it's hooked up only to the microphones. So right, they don't hear a thing if it's not.
That's good to know because sometimes you have to, I'm talking, but she's, I was saying.
Mm-hmm.
or people with experience filling in for a teacher in a classroom with knowledge of teaching. It's so much more important when somebody's gonna be out for an extended period. So it's important that we get quality people for these jobs.
The daily per diem?
Not, not at this time, no.
Any other questions? With that, all in favor, vote by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Two thousand nineteen, twenty, spring, start college now, an online course request. Is there a motion to approve the request? Second? Comments, questions? Keel, do you want to add some information about that or Jason?
Jason will have some information for us about the students for this year. Again, this is something that the board approves each year. We're excited to have students who are interested in applying for and taking college-level courses and getting credit for those. The state has changed the name of the program over the years, youth options, course options, and now the Start College Now program. So it's an important program for our district as we have students each year who participate in advancing themselves in courses that are able to work outside of our regular curriculum. Jason?
Yeah, it's a great opportunity for students that, for the online course requests, obviously, school our size can offer everything. So now with online options, it gives them an opportunity to go after their desired type of courses. And we have a lot of students that want to challenge themselves, whether because they're gifted and are ready to move on to that next level of class or just from a shared interest standpoint. So we have a great deal of them that are looking at taking advantage of this this year. Sometimes their forms look like they've went on taking like three hundred credits at once, but partly we have them put that down just because there are only so many courses at like universities and that will open up. So we try to keep their options available as much. We're all for allowing the students to challenge themselves.
It's a great way for a student to get a head start at college and experience two college credits and save some money in the process too for their family. But as Jason said, it's a variety of reasons students might be advanced in a particular area. One of the rules for the Start College Now program is that it's not a course that we offer here. They have a class, but we know we have students who might be interested. And again, a student might be interested in a particular area and want to venture off into courses that we just don't have enough students for that elective. And so it offers an opportunity for the students to take those courses that way, so.
Do you mind giving in an example of some of the courses that some of our students have taken or might be taking?
Yeah, there's quite a variety. A lot of times they'll get different foreign languages, just because we don't offer a great deal of foreign languages. Some of the students, if they go through our entire math sequence, they'll take a college-level math sequence. That would be kind of the next one in line. There are some that are more specific social studies-related, like gets a little bit more into studies. We offer your general histories and psychology, different things. But if you get too unique, sometimes you'll get into some of those categories. And some of the kids, if they just know what their college interest is going in, what a great way to already get it. Number one, get a start on it if that is how they go. Number two, to try it out, just decide before you start having yourself or your parents pay a lot of money, figure out if that's what you want to do, so.
It's wonderful that we have the opportunity for our students to do that. And I believe they can take, how many credits? Is it eighteen?
Yeah, the district can pay eighteen. And like every other district, we only pay the ones that we don't offer ourselves. So like, we're not going to pay for a student to take psychology when we operate AP psychology. But they can get up to eighteen credits paid, which. Depending where you go, can be quite a savings, so.
And that doesn't include AP classes? So they can also get college credit for those courses as well? Alright, any other questions? All in favor, vote by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Early graduation requests. Do I have a motion to approve the early graduation requests as presented? Second? Jason, would you like to give us some more information, please?
I'm hogging the mic tonight. Themselves and just trying different options. We do have some students too that after three and a half years of passing everything are ready to move on to the next stage of their life. And especially, I hate to say it, but not all students love school after thirteen or fourteen years, no matter how hard we try. And depending on different family circumstances, it can vary a lot from family to family too. So we do have a number of requests for early graduation. All these students are on track to complete all their requirements. And if you think about it, they have to do a pretty good job of that. We have, they still have to get the twenty-six credits before they walk out the door. The maximum opportunities they can have going through halfway through their senior year is twenty-eight. So these kids have been really successful earning their credits and have desired for different reasons to move on. Some will start schooling right away, especially if they move into a different area. Some will go, talk about the cost of schooling. Some will go and work that spring semester to save up money for that next year of schooling. So there's a lot of kids, ten, that have requested that this year. And they would all be on track to finish at the end of the semester.
Any other questions?
Can you recommend this approval?
I do recommend the Super Bowl, Robert.
Anyone else? With that, all in favor, vote by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries and we wish them only the most success possible moving forward. The next agenda item is the Trap Club Cooperative Agreement with the Soto Area School District. We've been informed that there's a little bit more information. Some of the parents might be gathering, so we're going to table this item until the next meeting. The next item on the agenda is the policy updates. Is there a motion to approve the revised policies as presented? And the chair of the policy committee, Matt, would you like to speak to the policy updates?
This one was a pretty easy process for us. These are based on the Neola updates, which is a group that we use that sets policy and recommends policy for districts. So most of these were recommended policies, simple things. I think one of them that stood out to me was the smoking policy, that we don't want to allow smoking indoors or outdoors. So updated that policy to include outdoors and things like that. So just new updates and that's about it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Keel, did you have anything? No?
Well, just, Matt said it, but every time this comes up, we like to let people know that what a good service Neola provides for us. They take information from districts around the state as we all go through our policies and evaluate them. And our group reads those policies, makes recommendations, sometimes asks about changes or asks about policy corrections that we might be interested in. And sometimes those go back, they get reviewed by the attorneys that work with Neola, and they end up being in the next update for other districts too. So there's quite a process of cooperation, the districts involved. But what it does for us is it gets us into actually talking about the essence of the policies and what they mean to us and not so much, you know, trying to figure out if we're using the right language or the right terminology to be correct because that's what the attorneys do for us, is make sure that we're using the right legislative matching terminology, the right legal matching terminology, and allow us to make sure that our policies are up to date and meeting, you know, those requirements.
And with that, we typically have two readings for policy unless it's state statute or it's a very minor wording change that, for example, some of these policies, instead of having board members, it just now says board. And so it was such a small item that it didn't really change anything to the policy, but it was a legal recommendation. So these are policies that we are just going to have one reading because of the revision that they're requesting. So with that, all in favor, vote by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'd also like to thank Beth for her work on our policies because she spends a tremendous amount of time working on all of this with, these policies with Neola. The next item is the tax levy. I'd like a motion to approve, to certify the tax levy for two thousand nineteen, twenty in the amount of five million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars with the general fund tax levy of four million, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. Community service fund tax levy of forty-five thousand and the debt service levy of nine hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Do I have a motion? And a second? Mike, would you like to give us some more information about the tax levy, please?
The tax levy as presented in corporate. I guess now the October fifteen paid certification and received last Wednesday, which was kind of that final piece that we were waiting on. Also around that same time, we receive our final revenue limit numbers. You have to wait till after your third Friday and September counts to have those numbers set. This, this tax levy is set accordance to the laws that are in place right now. We are levying to the full amount allowed under the revenue caps. And the debt service that is being levied is the amount that will fund next year's principal and interest payments on both the debt that was issued for, back in two thousand and four, for the referendum to do the remodeling. And the debt service that is still paying off that refinancing of the unfunded liability that is, that is subject to revenue limits and is not outside the revenue limit calculation. The forty-five thousand dollar community service fund levy is the amount levied to operate the pool. Our plans are at this time to operate in the same way that we did this last summer for next year. Obviously, this money is for a July to June basis. So we will be having further conversations about next July and not August's operations because we may need to relook at how much that is and if it's sufficient to fund it. But the forty-five thousand will definitely set us up for, for this school year. Total levy, it's an increase of two point oh one percent or a hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars from the previous year. On a mill rate perspective, it's going down sixteen cents as our equalized value went up three point eight six percent district-wide.
Are there any questions?
Mike, I probably shouldn't. Maybe she could. Sorry, Mike. Unfunded liability for the WRS, when would that be obligation be fulfilled?
We will make the final payment on that, I believe, Robert, in two thousand and twenty-two. Actually, I have it in, in the information that we had earlier in the day and I will look it up.
Will he still have that? Are there any questions? We can come back to it. We don't need to, you know what, we'll come, we'll come back to it. Because you don't need it to vote. Okay. Sure. So all, all in favor, vote by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll come back. So item two. What? Aye, aye, aye. Two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty budget. Motion to approve the two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty budget as presented. Is there a motion? Is there a second? And this is Mike's conversation once again. Do you also have the budget up on the screen? Could that be put up on the screen, please?
Yes, I will put that up on the screen.
Thank you. Mike, I'm sorry, could you speak right into the microphone? Thank you. No, it's working, you just have to speak right into it.
Um, because I can't hear. Um, the, the budget is pretty much the same budget that was approved at the annual meeting. It now has been reflected to increase the, the tax levy and finalize the equalization aid. Total revenues budgeted are thirteen million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and total expenses of the same amount, thirteen million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars in the general fund, which is ten. Special education fund budget, total revenues of two million, six hundred and seven thousand, oh fifty-one, consisting primarily of the transfer from the general fund of one thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and two hundred and two dollars. And expenses being the same. As we talked about debt service, they were budgeting for expenditures of nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, four seventy-four, leaving indebtedness at the end of the year of two million, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. And we also show budgets for food service, community service, and package cooperatives.
Are there any questions? With that, all in favor of accepting the two thousand nineteen, twenty budget as presented with some changes from the annual meeting, please vote by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the lawn mower purchase. Is there a motion to approve the purchase of a John Deere one-five-seven-five terrain cut mower from Tractor Central Westby for the amount of twenty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars and one cent as recommended by the Building and Grounds Committee? Is there a motion? Is there a second? Robert, would you like to give a little information about this from Buildings and Grounds? It's just, it's, we've been talking about it for a long while.
Got anybody? Should I? I can't find this. No, we've been looking at purchasing lawn mowers for a long time, trying to figure out what is the best situation for our staff. And this is the one that we've come up with. And we've had good luck with John Deere and great service from Tractor Central. And so it's the intention of the Building and Grounds that we should buy this more for our staff and to keep things updated. Because I think the other one's getting towards the last, like, set we have. And we talked about different timing in the year to buy it. It seemed to be as good a time as any. There's not a lot of difference when you get into the municipality or tax-free entities like a school district in terms of buying those in special, special deals, so, thank you.
Yep, and this, this unit is the, what we call the rear steer, which also then has the snow blower and the brush that's placed on it in the winter. It's got the cab to allow for the snow removal, which is another important reason to do it now as opposed to waiting till next spring. Because it's, it's got enough hours on it right now that we could be looking at being down and that would definitely impact our sidewalk snow removal.
It is something we would like to thank the Buildings and Grounds Committee for putting so much time into the different options that might be available, whether it was repair or purchasing and with our maintenance staff and crew because they also take a great deal of pride in making the grounds look good and working hard at that and also keeping us safe. As Mike said, this is the main piece of equipment that keeps our sidewalks clear in the winter too. So it's something that gets a lot of use around the district year-round. So, it's something that gets a lot of use around the district year-round. So, we appreciate everybody's effort. It took, it, as Robert said, it took a few months to really work through and decide what would be the best approach and, uh, and be the most, uh, economical for the district and effective. Thank you.
Any other questions? With that, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, I would like to move, um, Brooks' information that he's going to present up on the agenda because I know he has to leave a little bit early tonight. So, um, once again, if you don't mind introducing yourself. There you are.
All right. Sorry, it's not too loud, right?
Perfect.
So, uh, my name is Brooke Sucker, and I'm one of the student representatives. And, uh, first thing on the agenda, I'd like to talk about the musical. Uh, things are going pretty well so far. Uh, we're going off script right now, so we're kind of starting to get things rolling along. We're not in costume yet, but we're starting to learn down our lines and the acting and kind of musical numbers. Uh, second thing I'd like to point up is the homecoming week. Uh, the king and queen were Jordan Barr and Alex Jacobson. And, uh, the sophomores were the ones who kind of won for this year's homecoming. And finally, for hockey, I'm still kind of debating whether to go out or not.
You'll have to let us know. When do you have to make a decision, Mike?
Uh, I think it's the start of November.
Is there anything, anything else that you'd like to share with us about the start of school? Or it's actually the first semester or first quarter?
When is the play?
Uh, actually, I-
The name of the play and when, when will it, when will you be performing?
Uh, the play is Monty Python Spamalot. And, uh, I think it's going to be on November second.
Wonderful. How would somebody get tickets if they wanted to purchase tickets?
Uh, I'd have to talk that over with the director.
At the door.
At the door.
At the door. At the door. Or somebody probably could contact the school district too, the high school, if they wanted tickets. Like a large number of tickets in particular. Well, thank you, and thank you for, uh, being with us tonight. I know that you have a very busy schedule, so thank you. So, with that, the next agenda item is informational, and it's the first reading of policies. And everyone received them. I know how much I like to read policy, which I really do. I don't know how much the whole world likes to read policy. Um, but if there are any questions, please, uh, reach out to the, uh, policy committee if you have any questions after reading this, this. And it will, it'll be on our agenda next month for the second and final reading. Is there anything that anyone would like to discuss about them at this time? One of them is new, and that's, uh, six-six-three-oh. It's a cash handling and, uh, deposits policy that we're, that we're adding. So, with that, we'll move on to item, um, B, Buildings and Grounds Committee update, and this is for an operational referendum. Mike, would you like to go ahead and start speaking to this topic, please?
And he'll get that up on screen, but, uh, the Buildings and Grounds Committee has been working along with the administration to, uh, work on our options for referendums. And so, we put together information, uh, in part to help educate the community about the different types of referendum and what our possible approaches are. And also to refresh everyone's memory about where we have been in our, our cycle with the referendum and talk about where it is that we're intending to go, uh, over the next few months, too.
So, referendums in Wisconsin, um, current law limits the annual amount of revenue each school district can raise. And this is called the revenue limit or revenue cap. Um, and that's what we were talking about during the budget process, that basically they, they take your number of students, what you've spent on them in the past, give you a slight increase or decrease, and then say, this is how much based on this year's students you can, um, obtain through the, uh, revenue limit, which is the amount of money between the taxes and the general aid. If a school wants to spend more money than what is allowed under the revenue cap, they must go to local property tax owners and ask for permission to increase local taxes. There's basically three types of referendum questions in Wisconsin. The first is a question to issue debt. The second is a question to increase the revenue cap for a certain amount of time, which we, we're gonna call it a non-recurring referendum. And then you can have a question to increase the revenue cap on an ongoing basis or a recurring referendum. So, basically, we're gonna talk today at the beginning here about two different types. And that's the referendum to issue debt and the referendum to exceed the revenue limit on a non-recurring basis. And it's important to point out the differences between these two because I think for the general public and even some within our school district, that it's easy to confuse the two, um, because so often the, the word referendum is interchangeable. A referendum to issue debt is generally used for major construction projects. And in actuality, after the referendum is approved, the district levies the principal and interest on the approved debt outside of the revenue limits. That's what we have in Fund Thirty-nine and, and levy accordingly for that. Taxes levied can only be used to pay the approved debt, the debt that was issued to finance that approved project. And VAS has successfully passed referendums to issue debt back in nineteen ninety-four when the elementary school was built and in two thousand and four when this building, um, was remodeled. We've also failed referendums to issue debt in nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine, twice, two thousand, and just last November in two thousand and eighteen. There's also referendums to exceed the revenue limit on a non-recurring basis. This is used to provide additional revenues to maintain programs and ongoing maintenance needs. The annual amount is approved for a defined period of time. In our case, it's five years. And VAS has successfully passed referendums to exceed revenue limits in two thousand and four, two thousand and ten, and two thousand and fifteen. The current five-year referendum expires at the end of the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, which now we are in as we speak. So, the history of Verona area schools' operational referendums. In November two thousand and four, at the same time that the electorate approved the remodeling or the referendum to issue debt for the middle school, high school remodeling, they also provided two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for five years to maintain all district facilities. The vote was two thousand one twenty-five yes to one thousand nine seventy-five no, very close vote. April sixth, two thousand and ten, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year was approved for another five years by a vote of eight oh seven to six oh two. In two thousand and fifteen, we increased the amount by a hundred thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand for the next five years, and that vote was nine hundred and thirty-six yes, four hundred and seventy-three no, almost a two to one margin.
Well, we, Mike, I'll take turns on this, but when we look at the current referendum to exceed revenue limits, which was, as Mike said, for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. What we did is listed some of the major projects and items that we did, uh, use this money to purchase or spend for the district. First, instructionally, uh, in terms of technology, we had refreshing of our computer labs, purchased and refreshed several Chromebook carts, which are, uh, the carts of Chromebook computers that are used with the students in the classrooms on a daily basis. Also, purchasing classroom tablets and wiring, uh, improving much of the infrastructure needed for the effective use of technology throughout the, the buildings, which is something that is, as you know, if you work with technology, takes some constant updating to, to make all those pieces work well together. We also used the money for elementary and middle school English language arts curriculum materials. We had, uh, some large purchases. We did some, some complete overhauls of our, uh, English curriculum, which is something that all students, uh, go through here at the district. And so, we used, uh, that same purchasing money for those particular projects. We also, during the same time period, bought five new school buses and a large van, which are, of course, used to transport students on a daily basis. In terms of building and facility maintenance, we have several projects that, that, uh, we have completed over the past five years, including roof replacements at the middle school, the high school, and Bigley Pool. We have new lockers for the middle school that were just installed. We had the bus garage parking lot improvements. Asphalt and concrete repairs and replacement throughout the district. We also did boiler, electrical switchgear, clocks, and phone system replacements during the same time period. And we did also middle school and high school safety and accessibility improvements for students.
So, on a tax levy basis, over the last five years, you can see that our overall tax levy has remained relatively constant as also our, our Fund Ten non-referendum, um, which is our general fund tax levy, um, has, you know, back in the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year, it was three million, eight hundred thousand. Uh, the budget that was just approved tonight is at, uh, four million, seventeen thousand. On a mill rate perspective.
Um, back in fifteen, sixteen, it just cuts out. Um, on a mill rate perspective, it's been at seven oh five, um, back in fifteen, sixteen to six fifty-eight. They, the kind, the equalized value continues to increase.
Hold on, hold on a second, Mike. I know it's cutting in and out, so he just, he's switching microphones. Is that better?
Well, is it?
There you go. Perfect.
Um, the, the, the mill rate has, um, basically maintained itself also over that time period accordingly. If you look at the total mill rate history of Verona back since the last referendum, which was approved to issue debt back in two thousand and four, you can see in two thousand and four, our mill rate was eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Then it did spike up to ten forty-one, and that is because of the timing in which, um, when you have a project like that, you don't realize the additional state aids on those monies you're spending until the following year. So, that's why it dropped down then, then the following year. But, the highest point after that, and really the highest point during that time was back in two thousand and twelve. Our mill rate was at ten ninety-three. The budget that was approved, um, tonight left us with a mill rate of eight seventy-three. So, you can tell that our, our taxes have been decreasing in Verona.
So, one of the things that we wanted to do was look at comparisons of some of the other districts in our region and, uh, some of the referendums that they have gone through. So, this may be a little small for some of you in the back to read, but, for example, West Salem School District had one million, six hundred thousand dollar, recurring referendum for nineteen twenty. It's one million, eight hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one. It goes up to one million, nine hundred thousand dollars in twenty-one, twenty-two. Westby School District has a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar, uh, operational referendum this year. That'll go up to five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars next year, the ninth, or the ninth, I'm sorry, this year, the nineteen twenty school year. And the next year to eight hundred and seventy-five thousand for the twenty twenty-one school year. Now, the next few are interesting too because G E T, Lafarge, North Crawford, uh, Holman also have what are termed recurring referendums. So, for example, G E T authorized eight hundred thousand dollars per year to exceed the operational referendum. And that began in the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve school year and continues every year, uh, without any additional referendum vote or action. Uh, that's where the term recurring comes in. The referendum that we typically look at at Verona is a five-year non-recurring referendum. So, each five years, it would be up for us to consider what our needs are. Lafarge does that same thing with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, recurring since two thousand and nine. North Crawford is four hundred thousand dollars per year, recurring also since two thousand and nine. And again, those districts can count on that money each year in addition to any funding that they receive, uh, through the standard budgeting process. In La Crosse, that amount is four million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year for five years. And of course, that's a much larger district, but just to give an idea of some of the districts of their various size, uh, have some of the same issues as far as issuing an operational referendum. Holman, as we said, is four hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year, recurring, and four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, non-recurring. On Alaska was two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to three million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. And of course, here in Verona, we've had three hundred and fifty thousand per year for the past five years from two thousand and fifteen, sixteen to two thousand and nineteen, twenty. Now, one of the things that we've been discussing with the, with, uh, the board and with the committees and with the administration is looking at our referendum process in Verona and our future referendum to exceed the revenue limits. So, what we consider is the feedback we received throughout the November two thousand and eighteen referendum process. And in the subsequent community survey completed during the spring of two thousand and nineteen, which clearly conveyed the following. First, we heard very loud and clear that the project was too large and the tax impact was too high. And we also heard that we needed to break the work into smaller pieces and spread the financial impact out over time. The community asked that we focus on infrastructure, repairs, safety, and accessibility. The overall message to us was we need to keep our facilities in good repair. Between two-thirds and three-fourths of our community responded that these areas are the areas that we need to support. So, as we discussed this with the board, we know that for our next step, the board and administration are analyzing the needs of the district to focus on an operational referendum to exceed the revenue limits. We will continue to assess our needs as a district for this year and also continue to discuss with the community our needs for a possible capital projects issue debt referendum in the next two to three years.
So, future referendum to exceed the revenue limits and amounts are still to be determined. When we gathered our, our administrative team, our department heads, both in the, uh, technology areas, the, um, IT, transportation, buildings and grounds, and asked them to please take a look, think out five years as well as you can, and, and what types of things do we see coming up that really are going to need to be addressed in that time? And again, breaking them down into instructional, transportation, and buildings and grounds. If you look at the instructional side of things, I mean, there's gonna be a need for con- continued computer infrastructure improvements. Um, in the Career and Technology Education Department, um, they have some high-priced equipment that is going to need to be replaced, um, and continue to need to be replaced on a, on a, ongoing basis. And our, uh, band uniforms are twenty years old and will need to be, um, are, are scheduled to be replaced along with some major instrument purchases. Transportation, we gotta continue our bus purchasing and trying to maximize the value that those buses have. Um, and, and how we do that. We've had some really good conversations as to whether, you know, it, it does make sense to contract out transportation. We've had the pluses and minuses conversation. Right now, our, our intent would be to continue on with, with our current of operating our own, but there is a cost of that, and that cost is often high in capital. And to keep up and to keep our fleet where it needs to be, it will take some significant investment. And then we have the building and facilities maintenance. At the elementary school, which is now twenty-five years old, and while we've redone flooring, to my knowledge, we've never done a complete painting. I'm almost positive the gymnasium's never been painted. Um, there, there's just some general upkeep that needs to be done. Um, there, there's just some general upkeep that needs to be done in, in addition to some pretty major, um, upgrades to the HVAC system, uh, the plumbing, you know, the bathrooms, it might be the hand wash sinks, um, you know, they are functioning right now, but they are twenty-five years old and, and may need to be, be replaced. We're starting to see those things go. Bathroom partitions, that type of thing. Um, it's, it's time to, to invest in our, in our buildings. Middle and high school, um, we're gonna have to take a look at our elevator lift replacements, building envelope repairs. We've got some doors that, that are showing, you know, the signs of being Wisconsin winters with rust and, and everything, along with heating control upgrades that, again, back in two thousand and four, were, were cutting edge, and, and now we're fifteen years later, and, and there, it's time to upgrade those. Better Futures could use a new roof. HVAC carpet and concrete replacement. Bigley Pool, um, needs boiler work, circulating pumps, heat exchanger, and air compressor replacement. Asphalt and concrete repairs and replacement throughout the district are needed and will continue to be needed, um, on an annual basis. Maintenance equipment replacement, we try to budget, um, as we did tonight with, um, with, with the mower purchase. We try to, you know, have a schedule and a plan, but they do have some larger pieces of equipment that, that basically, you know, it does make a lot of sense to, to use a referendum like this to, to finance. And not last, last but not least, um, safety and accessibility improvements. We are constantly looking at that. That is something that hasn't went away. We've received safety grants, which have funded, um, a, a good share of the improvements that we have made for that. But we have used some referendums in the past, and, and we will have to in the, in the future, um, for things like, uh, camera replacements. I mean, you know, you put in a camera and boom, seven years goes by, and that, that's a pretty old camera. They're on twenty-four-seven, hopefully. Um, and, and they, they do have parts that do wear out, um, along with the software and the licensing requirements that goes with that. The key fobbing was a, a major investment, major improvement in, in the safety of, of what we can do with it. But they are moving parts and, and they do have technology that, that does require replacement and, and, and keeping things up with that. And accessibility improvements, we've, we've come a long ways in, in the last six months here at the al- air, middle school, high school, but we still have a long ways to go. Um, and, and we'll continue as we identify those, addressing them as, as we need to. So, um, this is always kind of my disclaimer. You know, all projections that we're using throughout this process are using the state laws as approved in the biennial budget in two thousand and eighteen. Anything that changes from that could change what we're gonna be talking about as far as mill rate impacts and, and how our, our district is funding in the future. And we all understand that, but we are trying to look out five years when we operate in a two-year budget cycle. Student membership is anticipated to remain constant right now with modest increases projected in two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. Any deviation from these projections will impact the revenue limit calculation and therefore our tax levy in future years. The Verona area school district is scheduled to retire its existing debt issued in two thousand and four for the remodeling of this building, um, during the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, three school year. And for a little perspective, the debt on that, the debt service that we are planning for this year is eight hundred and two thousand dollars, where next year, that levy will drop by two hundred and thirty-seven thousand to five hundred and sixty-four thousand. This debt was structured that way to coincide with the reduc- with the, um...
referendum to exceed the revenue limits, um, changing.
So...
Don't pause. Don't pause. Uh, okay. As of, Tom, as of January first, two thousand and eighteen, a school district can only hold referendum questions in one calendar year, and the referendum must be held on regularly scheduled spring and fall election. The next general election date is April seventh, two thousand and twenty, which means the Board of Education must adopt the resolution by January twenty-eighth of two thousand, or twenty twenty.
I'll repeat that last line, just in case. The next general election date is April seventh of two thousand and twenty, which means the Board must adopt and file a resolution by January twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty to be considered in April.
So with that, um, buildings and grounds, we, um, we've been talking about these topics for a couple of years as a board. And these items would have been covered under the referendum if it would have passed last year. So these are not, um, surprises to the board, because we've been having these conversations, like I said, for, for several years. And knowing that the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars was going to expire in June of, um, two thousand and twenty, we know that we're going to need to go to referendum in April of two thousand and twenty. We, we know that we will for an increase in the operational budget, for a referendum for the operational budget to increase. This does not include, um, new buildings or an expansion of the existing buildings that we have. These are, I'll say it again, operational expenses for our different, for our district, and so this will exceed the amount of dollars that we receive from the state and through property taxes. Next month, um, the Board will be presenting what that amount will be. There's a little bit more information that we want to gather. We, we can't go out to bid on these items at this point, because we haven't passed a referendum. So they're very educated, um, numbers that are being compiled, but they are not numbers from the bidding process. So I think we should make that very clear as well. Some of these items that are on the list, you don't know if they are going to work for, uh, two years or two days. We do everything that we can within our power to make sure that our buildings are operating as, um, physically responsibly as possible. Um, we have a wonderful team that works for our district, uh, whether it's through transportation, administratively, um, through our custodial staff, um, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our cafeteria. I mean, everyone is very diligent in our district and really works to, uh, meet the needs of our students and our community. So we feel very fortunate for that. With that, buildings and grounds, we have met four times, and that's Robert, Matt, and myself, um, just this month, just to tweak things a little bit, just to make sure that there, you know, everything that we can think of at this time, um, is going to be included in this operational referendum. And then Budget and Finance has met as well, and we, um, are going to be meeting again, and that is Amanda, Marina, and myself, um, on Budget and Finance. So with that, are there any questions from the Board? As to what, oh, one more thing I should add is this presentation, uh, the Board has requested that this will be on our website, so anyone will be able to look at the presentation on our website. And as we have, uh, more details that are being presented to the Board, that information will go on the website as well. So we want our community to be as informed as possible, um, because I, we know that there was a concern last time that people didn't have information. And once again, we're being recorded, so that hopefully people are listening and getting information that they want. And if they have questions, they can contact Keel or Mike, and, uh, they will be happy to answer any questions, um, that the community has. Are there any questions from the Board? Robert?
Certainly a question, but just some comments. Being a longer-term Board member than some, I've had the opportunity to listen to the public, and yes, they want us to maintain their investment in education here in Verona. I thank our taxpayers for the dollars they've given us over the years. It's been very helpful to have this exceeding revenue limit to maintain our buildings and our programs. Each year, it seems like our expenditures for salaries and benefits gets to be slightly increased number in terms of percentage of our budget. So that leaves less for, um, building maintenance and, and those types of things. And as all of you know, things aren't getting cheaper in terms of dollars. They're just getting made cheaper, I think. Um, when you talk about an air handling unit that's twenty-five years old, you don't know when it's gonna pass away. I haven't called the coroner on it, but we need to re-think about replacing those in a timely manner because of the efficiency. And one of those units, we're estimating it like a hundred thousand dollars. And that's a significant portion of a maintenance budget. And I think, uh, it would be in the best interest of our community if we continue to invest in maintaining our buildings. I, as, as mentioned, we don't have a dollar number. I got a gut feeling, but that's just mine, and I'm not gonna share that with anyone. And I think it's, it's time, and we've had this for four and a half years, this three hundred and fifty thousand, and we'll get another half year out of the expenditures. But we're got, have identified expenses going forward that we're going to need to address. They're not a wish list. They're a needs list, and their best, uh, estimate is to win. Some of these things need to be replaced because of the life expectancy of them. So with that, I hope everyone has an opportunity to become informed about what we're ask, gonna ask for. So stay tuned for that. And also be, rest assured that we have spent this, this money that you've given us to exceed revenue cla- caps on a non-recurring basis over the last, what, fifteen years? And we've done it, I believe, a very good job of addressing the needs of maintaining our facilities that you have so graciously entrusted us as Board members and as the staff at the school to maintain and keep up, so that we can provide a safe and quality education for our community. So thank you for that, electorate, taxpayers. And I understand Matt's equalized value went up fifty-seven percent.
Does anyone else have a comment or question? So thank you, Robert. Thank you, Mike and Keel. I know this is, uh, it's, it's, it's a lot of work and a lot of additional hours actually have gone into this above and beyond what the normal, um, day looks like and what comes up in the normal day. So, so thank you for that. And in November, uh, this will be, the goal is to have this as an agenda item on the November, thank you, Amanda, uh, on the November agenda for us to vote on the operational referendum to exceed. The next item is the administrator reports, um, Jason and Tom, the upcoming parent-teacher conferences.
I'll see if this works or not, or if Mike broke it.
Yes.
I don't know. I paused just a second ago. So the only thing really unique with the parent-teacher conferences, we're going three-thirty to seven-thirty as in the past. Uh, we did at the high school level, we broke away a little bit. Um, we're gonna do some of ours the same night as middle school conferences. Um, but we also felt that it was important, since we have some quarter-length classes, uh, we actually put one of our conferences in each of the quarters. Um, they're not in the middle, um, because we also tried to avoid, um, a lot of the heavy sports activities. So like the first quarter, it's towards the end. The second quarter, it's a little bit towards the beginning. Um, but we thought it was important to, uh, have a conference in every one. We'll see how highly attended that mid-April one is. But I think, uh, we just felt it was important, especially to, uh, reach out, especially for those, uh, quarter-length classes. But, um, otherwise, there's three-thirty, seven-thirty. Um, the first middle school one is, uh, coming up this week.
Twenty-fourth, this Thursday.
Thursday. And then the high school and middle school both have one next Tuesday.
All right, and, uh, over at, uh, Verona Elementary School, we'll be holding ours on November twenty-first and twenty-sixth, I think around those same timeframes, three-thirty to seven-thirty. And I am unclear on our spring one. I believe it's February, but I don't recall.
March twelfth and March seventeenth.
March, that was close.
Yeah. You'll be ready in February.
Sure, we will be.
So one of the things that I do wanna mention about the, the parent-teacher conference process is we brought that to the district leadership team last year to discuss and see if we could get, uh, some ideas for how we might adjust the conf- the conferences to make them more effective and to make sure we get families out to support those and get the information there. And that's where some of the changes that came up with, uh, when we are holding the conferences and how they align within the, within the school year, uh, work differently at different levels. And so the dates are adjusted to meet those needs. And, uh, by something like the, the high school changing that to have that each quarter, it's not something that, that we had thought to do in the past, but of course, it makes perfect sense to try to have a conference during each grading period when the course is only a quarter long. So we thank the district leadership team too for participating and taking these ideas back out to the staffs at their respective schools and talking about it and coming back with those ideas for us, uh, to work on. And we'll continue to use that process too. We're gonna see how these changes work and if the improvements are effective, and hopefully learn from them and continue to make improvements to those. Thank you, everybody.
I was looking for John.
John just had to leave.
He just had to leave. Okay, did you wanna talk about his conferences or no?
Uh, yeah, his conferences are this Thursday and then next Tuesday. The only thing else special about his conferences in the past, uh, fifth and sixth grade will schedule, uh, whereas the seventh and eighth grade, uh, does more of the open house type of format. Uh, it's a definite transitional building, so...
Sure. I also know with pre-K, the conferences for that are not specific to those dates, because they have so many children and families to conference that they actually, uh, their conferences go on for more than a week.
Correct, and the, uh, uh, the Montessori school does the same thing too. As a matter of fact, I think they're gonna start some of their conferences next week, um, and spread them out or between this time and wrap them up by the, the twenty-sixth.
Thank you. Um, elementary parking.
Uh, the parking lot. From what I hear, it used to be just chaos, but, uh, really, it seems to be going much smoother. We've, uh, purchased some signs, uh, we are making sure that we're out there each morning, uh, encouraging parents to pull down as far as they can, uh, through the parking zone there. And, uh, they've been doing much better at it. Uh, the start of the year, when I first got here, I should say, I'm not exactly sure about the start of the year, but when I started a few weeks ago, uh, with Mr. Lee and I out there in the morning, it, things weren't too bad, but the, things have definitely gotten better. Uh, more parents are pulling further ahead. We have fewer parents stopping in the line, helping kids get out of their build, out of the cars and walking them into the building, things like that. So the line is doing a much better job of moving along. We've encouraged parents to park in the parking lot and feel free to walk their kids into the building, uh, or to the building at least. And, um, that seems to be going a lot better. Uh, we've come up with the idea too. I, actually, I had a student come out and, uh, help direct traffic one morning, and as I thought about it, I, I thought that might be another great leadership job for the students. So we are adding that duty. Uh, one of them, we have a little vest for him and a little lighted wand. And then, uh, another student will be a door holder for some of our younger kids if they're carrying treats or things like that. It's hard for them to get the door open, so we have a fourth grade student that'll also be helping hold the door for some of those younger kids. So, uh, added a couple morning duties there, but, uh, overall, I think the process is going much smoother, and I think the parents are starting to pick up on the plan.
I know when I was there this morning, which was raining very hard...
Don't count today.
And, no, no, it, uh, what, that was actually what I was going to say, is it was very smooth. The, the line moved very quickly. Children got out of the car. They got into the building very quickly, and there was no line to wait. And I don't remember seeing that in the past, and that was on a, on a rainy day where you think people might have been blocking traffic a little bit, but they didn't. So that was... but they didn't, so that was.
Oh yeah, it moved along pretty well. Angie Voss and I were out there with the umbrellas helping open doors and getting kids into the building.
Well, thank you for that. I don't think so. I think I would rather it be sunny and nice. Trillium Middle School Charter, Jason, are you?
No, I won't.
Okay.
I have notes too.
What was if I miss anything? I'm sure I will. But the Trillium Charter School, the Governance Council had formed earlier this year. And so they're doing a terrific job of organizing and building their structure. And they're working on their bylaws now and in developing their parent network and some of their communications. So they're using the Montessori school as a model and also Laurel High School as a model in terms of how they're building their bylaws and some of their processes. And so they've just done a really good job of growing that school and developing it. And Emily and Rob, the teachers, are also working well with the council in planning and organizing events for the school and things that they've done. I probably should let you see what he has for notes too because there are some events that were, that I think he was wanting to mention.
According to John's notes, they're actually working very well together. And Rob and Emily are doing a great job. And then he also wanted to point out that they visited La Crescent, Montessori STEM and also Sparta STEM to see a couple of similar type of programs and to see how they were working, so.
Right, that was one of the discussions that we had about personalizing the professional development for the teachers there so they could have, as this school is a new program, get some ideas from visiting some other schools. And so they took advantage of that opportunity on the last professional development day and came back with some really good comments and ideas and things that they liked, that they saw. It was good.
Leading for Learning, Jana, do you want to start?
Sure.
Please?
We attended the second, in the Leading for Learning series, there's four parts. The first part was August before school started, like the Monday before, or the Friday before school started. And then the last one was this past Wednesday. The first one talked about kind of what you heard today with the English Language Arts curriculum, talking about essential standards and making sure that we're coming up with guaranteed viable curriculum. These are all the words, like, these are all the wordages that the CISA Leading for Learning was throwing out at us. But it really is things that will build upon each other. When you look at, what's the word Jason helped me out with? When you look like vertical alignment to make sure that all of the curriculum is vertically aligned and making sure that you're building off of each other. And then a big part of that is also what we learned this past, Leading for Learning was on the standardized, or Common Formative Assessments. Was on the Common Formative Assessments and. Was working on the Common Formative Assessments and just making sure that we have a, just another data point for students, that we have another data. No, I'll just talk really loud.
No, they can't, they can't hear you. It's not me, it's not.
Pass it, pass it over to Tom, we'll keep yours. Try that one.
Oh, it's your location, because your box is here, so you guys sit in it, that's why it's in and out.
This last one was on Common Formative Assessments and it's just another data point as we're trying to make groups for win and things like that. It's just making sure that the grade level teams are coming together. Things that they talked about was making assessments on the same day and making sure that we're teaching the same curriculum. The thing, the teachers can use their own way to teach it, but making sure that all the, all the state standards are being taught. And it was, it was good to work together with the administrative team. We have, we're a fairly new administrative team with Tom, Jason and myself being new to the group. And I think that that helps maybe bring some different ideas or perspectives from different experiences that we have been through as well.
And Krista joined us too. And one of the things like Jana said, the importance of finding some structure within the groups is then you spend time talking about the different things that work that people have done and tried or the different challenges that people are encountering and how they might work through that. So the conversations that the, that the teachers have then tends to be more on what the impact is on the students and how they can learn from each other and work together on things. And the organization of the structure of it helps with that quite a bit.
I don't know if Jason or Tom, do you have anything to add to that?
First, I feel like we should give a shout out to Caleb for figuring out why our microphones.
Yeah, thank you Caleb.
We're working in certain spots. We thought it was just mic or the area around mic, that was like a dead zone or something.
Well, it is the area because of where the box is.
I think the great thing is it's actually been, and it's not like we could plan it because this is actually a statewide movement, but it really ties into what we're doing locally for our October end services, working on, I could say in my building, the essential learning standards, the learning targets and then the assessments that will piggyback off of those. And it's kind of guiding us along the process a little bit. And it's just nice, similar to like Jana said, the common terminology. And to get that terminology K-12, I think sometimes we take that for granted. But it's just like any type of language, you need to be all speaking the same language in order for us to truly efficiently understand. So it's been a great process for all of us. And there's times that I think even you get into our admin meetings and you deal with a lot of day to day or week to week type of things. And so to be able to get together as the entire team and go through a process together can be very beneficial team wise. That way if the mics go bad, we can lean and, you know, do whatever we need to do to make things work, so.
Consistency is going to be a huge factor for us. As we have different buildings like this and everybody's kind of doing their own thing, the opportunity to have consistency and. Common language from K-12 and administrative to the teaching side as well is going to be a huge benefit for us. So the, seeing the work that's been done so far, I think has been fantastic and I hope it continues to really grow our curriculum and our teacher development.
Well, thank you, thank you all for attending. The next item is the elementary school, middle school PBIS plans. Are you John now again, Jason?
I am John, but I would request you don't ask any questions. Because the middle school provided golden ticket opportunities for dress up days. They use these to get students engaged in swimming and other classes that the students struggle to engage in at times. And he just wanted to point out that they do, and like we talked about earlier with the transitional program, they do do a little bit different model at the 5th and 6th grade for PBIS than they do for the 7th and 8th grade also. So other than that, I know very little about it, so I will transition to Tom.
I guess that's going to be the week of our celebrations. They want to do a better job of informing parents what the celebrations are all about. So I think there's going to be some information going home on that. They also are, set up a bus PBIS. So they're going to have one of the buses come in, actually on October 30th. And each grade level will take their students out there and they'll go over bus behavior expectations with the students. Again, I think that will be positive. My communication with the bus drivers so far this year has been pretty good. And when they've needed support, I've just kind of gone out there and had a chat with the kids and things like that. So I'm letting them know that I'll help out as much as they need as well. But I think the opportunity to teach those behavior expectations for the students will be really beneficial for them. And then as far as our format this year, we are getting feedback from staff as a grade level teams instead of individually and taking a look at the data. We're going to collect that data from grade level teams and see if that gives us a little bit more insight to different grade levels and what they need as far as PBIS support there.
If you don't mind, I'm going to ask you to define PBIS because we have people who are listening that might not know what that acronym means.
PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. And what it is, it's a tool kind of created so that while we all have behavior expectations for students, PBIS gives us a way to teach those expectations to students so they know what to expect. And then we also can post those expectations throughout the building so students know how they're expected to behave in the lunchroom, how they're expected to behave in bathrooms and the hallways, pieces like that. And this just gives us, and we can create tools too. So like if we see that we're lacking in volume control in the lunchroom, then we have tools that we can teach kids to say, here's what the expectation is for that volume. Here's how you can practice the appropriate volume and pieces like that too. So it's just all these different interventions we can use with students to help support the behavior expectations that we have for them in various environments in our school.
Kindness, respect.
Absolutely. Those are the foundations of the program.
Thank you. Keel, did you have anything to add? I don't, since John isn't here, I didn't know if you had anything else you could think of.
Well, just that, you know, they do focus, as Jason said, on the transition for the elementary program is very involved. And so the 5th and 6th grade students appreciate some of that transition, using some of the same. A lot of what they do at those levels is look for positive ways to recognize students when they do something good. And that's where the golden tickets come in. And so they are looking for ways to, you know, mind students that they're watching and they're seeing and rewarding them for some of the nice things they do that would otherwise, could otherwise go unnoticed or unrecognized. And so bringing attention to that and talking about it so that there's some expectation and some recognition for students' behavior being positive that way too. So main focus at the middle.
Thank you. The next item is the district administrator report. So Dr. Aronson, if you don't mind, student, or it's enrollment update, school board appreciation week.
Right, so one of the things is the last board meeting was right before the actual official counts were in. And so we knew about where our numbers were going to be. And since then, we've been able to go through it and Beth and the buildings have all reported their numbers. And so our official third Friday count for this year was 1,162. And which is down four students from last year was 1,166. So just a slight change in our enrollment and that fluctuation, it has fluctuated a little bit even since the start of school, but that's the official count, so we can compare September to September there. We have seen, as I said, some continued changes and some enrollment changes through. But we also just were talking today about some of the changes in the district. There was an article in the paper recently that La Crosse School District was down over 200 students. Some other districts in the area are down quite a few students overall. Including some of our neighbors are seeing reduction in student enrollment. And that's something that is a concern for a smaller district and for a rural district. And something that we are concerned about too. But we're happy to say that our enrollment is very stable, that our number is very close to where we started last year. And we typically during the year see some increase in student enrollment. We end the year typically higher than we start the year too. So again, we feel like compared to what we're seeing around the region with our neighbors and all the way up to Holman and some other areas that are all declining this year, that we feel good that our numbers were stable.
Was that 1,162 students in attendance at Baroque Area Schools?
Right, on the third Friday.
So that's like butts in seats then.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And so the other thing is that we had, it was school board appreciation week, which is nice because our school board members work a great deal of time and spend a great, a lot of hours working to support the students and the staff and the district and the families and the community. And it isn't for any salary or pay and it isn't an easy job most days. But students were very kind and put together a couple of thank you cards for the board and signed them and did a very nice job of doing that. And we appreciate them taking some time to thank the board for all that they do. And Angie, you were able to go through the middle school and see some of the students and thank them?
I was. I thought, you know, I don't remember ever receiving something like this as a school board member. Maybe I just don't remember, but I don't, I don't think that I ever saw something like this. So I felt it was important to recognize the students. Many students don't know what a school board is and perhaps putting a face to this signature that they put on the card, I just felt it was important to recognize them. So I went Friday and thanked the middle school students from the Board of Education. And I then got to go around and visit them while they were having lunch. I was out with them a little bit for recess. And then the way the lunchtime works, I was also there when some high school students were there. And so I got to visit with some high school students too and I really enjoyed it. And they asked some very good questions and we were talking about their weekend and the football game. And there was going to be a show in Platteville, I believe, a cattle show. So they were telling me about, there were birthday parties and all of the fun things that go on in life. But I think it's pretty special that, that they took the initiative to do something like this from the student council. And also I believe the Trillium students are the ones that designed the outside of the card. And I think when students do that, just thanking them for their kindness and thoughtfulness is important. So it was, it was a pleasure. Kim?
There you go. I also had the opportunity to be at an assembly at the middle school. And Mr. Snyder introduced me and explained some of that. It was an assembly by Ms. Wisconsin for the middle school. But I also had the opportunity to be thanked and recognized there too as a board member. So it was a good opportunity for them to just see, they're just, we're just everyday people and some of the things we do. And it was also a very, a very good assembly.
Wonderful, thank you for attending that. I heard great things about it. With that, did you, and thank you for, I didn't know that there was a school board appreciation week. So now I do, so that was very nice. I know, I know. I mean, there's a celebration for everything.
The expectation's there now.
I know, I know. So Mike put together this Baird Budget Forecast Model and this is also going to be on our website. And that's speaking to the topic of an operational referendum. And this was discussed at the Budget and Finance Committee today. And then WASB, so there's a meeting tomorrow in Black River Falls. I'm not certain what board members are attending. I know I will be attending. Kim is attending, Matt, Vicki. I don't know if there's anyone else attending, but I'm looking forward to that. That's always a nice way to hear about what's going on in other school districts. And they also have a legislative topic typically that they talk to. And then there is also, John Schneider took me on a tour of the middle school after I was there for lunch. I got to see where Trillium is. I got to see the expansion. There are some 4th graders and 5th and 6th graders in Montessori. So I got to go into those classrooms, which was really interesting. I also got to see some of the other classrooms and the number of students that were in those classrooms. We have some very full classrooms. And so I enjoyed going through the building. There have been quite a few changes in the last couple of years and it was, it was a good experience. I recommend it highly. We did end up speaking to some 4th graders during the lunch hour that were part of the Montessori program and to see how comfortable they were attending the middle school. And they were amazing. What a great group of young people they are. Very communicative and had very good things to say about their experience being here as 4th graders. So that, that was nice to see. And I'd also like to remind everybody of the Board of Education, of the school board meeting in Milwaukee in January. I'm sure that information will be coming out if you're planning on attending that. And then there will be a survey that will be coming out, a WASB survey. You will be getting an email about, Beth will be sending that out. And that's about the school board and an evaluation of the. an evaluation of the, of the school board and what our needs are and how we're feel- feeling about our experiences and what we might need, uh, from the WASB as well. But that survey will be coming out pretty soon. Um, we'll be having another Buildings and Grounds meeting. Um, and then we'll also be having another, uh, Budget and Facilities meeting coming up. And I think that's all that I have. Anything else? With that, motion to adjourn.
One last thing.
Okay.
The reason why it's good to be on the school board and fun is because of what you just mentioned, our students. That's why we do it. It's really an honor. So with that, I will adjourn.
Second, all in favor say aye. Opposed, thank you. And thank you guys again for recording, spending two hours of your evening. We will work on this microphone situation. I was just gonna say, is this part of the referendum?